...there, which we called the base bid. And then there was an alternate bid, which was down on Ranchwood and Forest Street. And that was to alleviate some sanitary sewer issues down there. How are you there? Just in time. Here's just a little graphic that shows people, you know, really what's under the streets. We like to show this, just it's a good visual for people to see what's all going on underneath the street there. I won't spend a lot of time on it, it's just kind of a visual. But sanitary is typically in the middle, water main and storm sewer on one side or the other. And then there's a bunch of crossing pipes for sewer services, hydrant leads, gas, fiber and everything else underneath there. But that's all I really wanted to show on that. Scopo work for the base bid, Birch Avenue and 11th Street with really the water main loop with the reconstruction of a couple of water services and then a new service to the splash bath there. There were no storm sewer improvements made along there. And then the work on Cherry Avenue, we see the X on there. That area was also eliminated from the scope of the work as far as this project anyway. So that's the base bid. The next slide is the alternate bid, which is the Ranchwood Drive and Forest Street intersection. Really the main area or the main thing here to look at was really this, the sanitary sewer. We were looking at doing some water main on there, but the water main was found out to be PVC. So no sense replacing PVC with PVC, so sanitary sewer improvements were made in that area. On the next slide then, this is the preliminary estimated cost that was used in the preliminary assessment roll. The base bid for that area was estimated to be $288,000. The alternate bid was estimated to be $177,000 for a total estimated cost of $465,000. So city went out on the project, we've received probably five or six bids on it. On the next slide then, you'll see where the low bid came in. The city received a really good bid. The base bid ended up being $224,255. And alternate, alternate area number one here, which is the Ranchwood area, came in at $101,863 for a total construction cost of $326,118. So you can see these numbers are quite a bit lower than the estimated numbers, which is good for everybody, good for the city, good for those who are being assessed. On the, speaking of assessments, on the next sheet then, this is the special assessment policy. This is a summary of the policy, which you're seeing on this screen and the next one. On the left-hand side is the improvement category. In the middle is the assessment rate for new construction. And on the right is the assessment rate for reconstruction. Everything on this project was reconstruction. So if you want to pay attention to the right-hand side, not that middle section there. Particularly on this project, really the only thing assessed was street surfacing. So there's two lines in here, one is the front lot long side for 20% assessed. And then there's the side lot, short side for 10%, so half of the, half of the front lot. If you turn the page there, you'll get to the utility assessments. There you'll see reconstruction is 0% assessed. So storm sewer, sanitary, water services are 0% assessed. You did have water services on here, but again, they're 0% assessed, so not assessed to the property owners. If we turn the page, this is the cost summary by work type and basis of assessment. The main one for this project is really line items one and two. Line item one is the base bid area, that's Birch and 11th Street there. The total project cost ended up being $90.
Can you load up?
I can't get it. No.
Can you move a little closer? Can you move up here?
I do get this, but it's not any bigger.
Yeah, I know. So Birch Avenue and 11th Street, total project cost was $191,311 there. The linear foot of frontage there was 710 feet, which got to a unit assessed rate of $269. You multiply that number by 20%, and that's where you end up with a assessment rate per foot of $53.89. The Ranchwood and Forest Street is basically the same calculation there. Total project cost ended up being $94,353 with 333 linear feet of lot frontage. So you multiply or divide that, you'll come up with $283.49. Again, multiplying that by 20%, came up with a dollar amount of $56.70 there. You'll notice that these are both less than, you know, we received bids that were lower than, you would expect them to be less, and that's what they are, they're less than what the preliminary assessment was. The big change actually is on the Ranchwood one. I think if you remember right, it was somewhere near $75 per foot. That ended up being lowered down to $56.70 there. So, so a good reduction on that one based on the bid there. So both of those went down, all the assessments went down as well, so. And from going now from line item three there is the storm sewer improvements, then sanitary sewer. If you look at the far right, it's the same calculation, but the percentage is zero. So anything times zero, zero, so assessment rates are zero for those. You will see on the water main and the water services numbers in there, there was time, there was talk at one time of assessing those, I think. But those were considered reconstructs. So they fell into the reconstruct column and were 0% assessed. So, so those went to zero as well. Okay. Next slide, so next steps. So after tonight, the assessment roll will be considered for adoption by council, by resolution. If a landowner is objecting to their assessment and would like to take it as far as district court, they will need to follow a procedure. That's what's outlined on that yellow handout and also in the mailing that was sent out as well. So on the screen here are some additional assessment procedures. The owner may prepay the entire assessment. And there's no interest for doing that if the entire assessment is paid within 30 days. So if you pay within 30 days from adoption of the assessment, no interest will be charged to your assessment. If you go beyond the 30 days, interest will, will kick in. And then it'll end up going to the auditor and it's put on your taxes as well there. So you can make a partial payment. So if you're looking at your assessment rate and your assessment rate's pretty high and you want to make some down payment, you can make a partial prepayment. And just ask that you do that before November 15th again. And then that will lower your principal, which goes to the county and then it's put on the assessment. The next slide here shows that council has chosen to spread that over 20 years. So whatever the remaining balances that needs to be paid will be spread over 20 years and the interest rate will be 2.5% on that. So, which is, which is 1.5% what the, what the city brought the money for. So, so the interest rate is 2.5%. So if we go to the next slide there, deferment of assessment. Deferments are available, but you need to meet certain requirements. Those requirements are persons retired by virtue of permanent or total disability. If you're an active member of the Minnesota National Guard or other military reserves, as defined by state statute, or senior citizens that are 65 and older. But you must also meet some income requirements as well for that. So just so you know, if you do have a deferred assessment, interest does accrue during that deferment. And then you will need to apply within 30 days of adoption of the assessment if you'd like to be eligible for that deferment. So any questions on that? Please reach out to Tracy, the city clerk on that, and she can help you through that deferment process there. Okay. So with that, I will turn it back over to council. And if anybody's got any questions or if you want to open it up to questions or comments, as you have us to answer them.
I'll pass it back to you. Please come up, Mike. Mike, Mike Moore, is that a question?
Okay, Mike Moore, South Forest Street. And I received two different notices of assessment. One was for roughly $400, one was like for five grand. Can you explain what those are?
Is he on the assessment roll, please?
One's $5,100 and one is $12.47, that's all right?
Something like that, yes.
So the $5,100 is on Ranchwood, north side. You must have a parcel there, so 90 feet of frontage there. And then on Forest Street on the left side, so is that around the corner?
Yes.
And then there's, really it's 44 feet, but it's 22 feet because it's a side lot. So we split the distance, the difference in half because it's at 10%. So instead of 20%, it's 10% for that 44 feet. So you'll see on here is 22 feet.
So what, what, my question is what is the assessment for? Is that all asphalt?
That's all street, yep. Yep, that's all the street assessment for that area. So yeah, so no utilities were assessed.
So what, what, what's the linear footage?
It is 90 feet, which would be on the Ranchwood side and then 44 on the Forest Street side.
The 90 feet is at the front?
Yes, yep.
90.
That's the front of your house?
90 feet?
The front is the short end of 44.
Yep.
So does it always go the full assessment on the longest side?
Right. Yep, that's per policy there. And then it's half based on the side plot. In this case, just basically put in half the distance.
So that, that, that's all asphalt?
That's all asphalt. It's surface seeping.
Okay. I didn't know why I got through that, so I was just...
Yeah, it's around the corner.
Okay.
Near corner of it.
I didn't realize they separated them off though. All on one, just...
Yeah, no. Yeah, really, yeah.
It's, I guess that's my only question, I suppose it's expensive.
But it is.
You good, Mike? Yep. Thanks for the question, I'd like to answer it. To that point, I do have just a dumb question about Mike's. So if, it's 44 feet on the, on the Ranchwood or it's 90 on Ranchwood? I just wanted to get...
Yep, right on here in the top here.
Yep.
So we find here...
I'm good. Yep, number 12.
Yep, so number 12 there, and you look right above that on the, on the side over here, you'll see Ranchwood Drive, then you'll see the north side and going west to east. So that's his partial number here.
Okay.
Follow that across, that's 90 feet there. If you go down then further, you'll see Forest Street.
Right here.
Yep, so Forest Street right there.
North to south.
Yep, you know, the west side, north to south.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Do you think, your opinion, Bill, was the estimates, did they come in lower than anticipated? Five or six bids or because of the time of year or...
Yeah. I kind of looked at, I took a peek at the bid abstract real quick. You received one really good bid.
Oh.
If that bid wasn't there, you'd probably be closer to where the F...
Oh, okay.
So you got a, you got a good bid there.
Okay.
A little bitter there, so.
Good.
Any other questions from the council? Anyone? All right. Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Julie.
Oh, I do have one question, but it doesn't pertain to the assessment. There was a curb stop that was moved. Because I was told it was too far in, you know, it was on my property and legally couldn't go shut the water off, I didn't pay my bill. So it was moved out through the street. And I was asked if it was okay to leave the other one in or just put the one out by the curb. And I said, no, I did not want two of them. And I found out that what happened was the one that was there was just cut off and left. Is that true?
Matt's the first one, I keep track of these records.
Sorry, maybe, we'll check into it.
Okay.
Is the one that was further back into your property?
Yes, the original one that was there.
Okay.
So the one was moved and the other one was just cut off, so it's basically just...
No, no, there was, there was, there was, my curb stop was in, past the boulevard. Okay. So Dave wanted it moved out close to the street, so it was on the boulevard. And I said, well, it doesn't cost me anything, that's fine. But I did not want that one there and this one here because of the amount of connections. But I found out through Paige, who was the site supervisor, wherever she's called, she thought it was just cut off and it was not removed.
She had been there, it's back there.
Yep. Page recommend counsel.
So who is responsible for looking into it and giving back Mike? Claire, if I had absolutely all.
Um, I can look for him, I'll talk to, I'll talk to our staff and see if we got some pictures and see how far we went, you know, went back into there and...
And if it's still there, what's going to happen?
We'll have to have that discussion if that is the case.
So Bill, Bill, if you check and you could let Tracy know and Tracy will let Mike know?
Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
And another question is what is the curb stop on the east side of my place for? That goes to nowhere. It's, it's, it's on the, it's on the south side of the house, but on the east side.
That we had used for testing purposes for the water main. What we were gonna do, and that was called out for. And the other, secondary purpose for that is to get the swax in case we have to. That's in the public domain.
Testing for pressure.
Make sure it's called out. Pressure. Called out designing, purely just purpose, that was gonna be our testing port. And it was also gonna be a future availability to put the swax proper. And that's in the public domain.
Is that the secondary?
If you have another question, they're all here.
Okay, I do.
So you have three curb stops in your property?
There might be none. One might be cut off and one is to my house. And then there's one for doing testing or whatever.
Is it potential picture service?
Yeah, we have another one that rolls in on the corner of Ash Avenue and 11th Street. And there's another one someplace else. Either production port.
Brian slipped up to the back, to the Radeen.
Yeah, the same one.
He's having that Radeen on the S.
Yep. And again, I do remember the discussion, you know, we need this curb stop on City Highway and not on his property, that's why I put one up.
So what about Danny's curb stop, that's up in the tree roots?
Say that again, Mike.
What about Danny's, the gardens? How about their curb stop that was up? That's, I don't think that's on the boulevard.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Nor the other one else.
Yep.
So I was mindful.
Because we were right there digging it. And if I ever went after Danny's, his tree would be dead next year. We don't want to place everybody in the way they put trees and stuff. And some of the stuff just gets, gets caught, you know. Well, and immersive house is what it was when it was built. Was one of the first ones out there. And unfortunately it was, you know, it wasn't thrown away anyway. Some of the beers was, well, this has got to be good too, you know. It's never all... I can't say what happened back in the late 70s, 80s when those were put in or following procedures today.
Okay, this is just curiousness. My house and Danny's house are sewer joined on our properties and then went out to the street. Okay, you wanted those separated because you said we can't have both the lines come together.
And I said you are to...
Yep, across the street. There is a private sewer line that comes from a couple thousand feet away over the four houses on there. And they all hook together and dump into the sanitary sewer. Why is that different than mine was?
Who's your earthing to?
I believe you told me Smiths and Woods and then Aaron's.
Oh, okay, so...
That private line.
Okay, so that line that was put back there originally did service the corner house of...
Aaron's?
Yep, and the house that burned down and Woods.
And Woods?
And, and the last one.
Tom Smith?
Yep, no, Amy Rice's...
Oh, that's right, Aaron's, yes.
Yeah, that, that one. Those all went in there. And then what happened in the 2007 project, at the end of it, we had some leftover dollars and became across the street and all those people I just mentioned are now going out to the street.
They are going out to the street, I see that.
So that back line would have been abandoned at that time or is...
That still services the first house there of...
The Aaron's house.
Of Aaron's, yes. Thank you, Mike.
Aaron's didn't, Aaron's they come up front, they went out the back. And that was part of this problem.
Yes. The line was at such a flat grade and they were able to go come in there a couple feet.
Kid.
Go ahead, Mike.
Their line was on a flat grade, you said?
Well, the line that was installed, you know, I gotta, I gotta preface this, Mike, you know, I wasn't around back in the 70s, but I will tell you, installing and stuff, I will tell you, just go put your own in, do whatever you want to. And that's also some of the stuff that we have a lot, and that's why we have the rules today that we have. We have water lines that are 12 foot deep, it should be 6 foot deep. We have, it's just, it's just nuts. So we're trying to make corrective actions as we go and do everything, you know, if it's not, I'm right there without calling a bunch of extra costs.
Did you ever figure out sewer land that goes across the east side of our property on the right away? Where that comes from?
East side?
Yep.
Your property?
Yep.
That was the original sewer that fed, which would be the Jennasy House. The Paige Jennasy, that's how you say it?
And I'm going to call him.
Okay, that house and, and, um, electric, electric guy.
Troy?
Troy, and then the house that burned down. And he also picked up Neil's old house, and there's a walk.
There's a walk?
And yours, and that went to...
No, not mine.
And that went to, right to the north, and then it went all the way back to Convo Park. There's a pitch concrete line, all those lines go to, I installed them myself with him. Your sewer working?
Scared to flush the toilet out of the water.
It goes somewhere, I just wanted to, not sure where it goes.
I won't take up any more of your time.
No.
Good questions, I mean...
So you still have to dump water down that man?
No. We have to close all until, while it's happening with construction. John and I peeked in it while we had the asphalt there, and then at that time we flushed it, there was nothing, no concerns at all.
So in the future is some more Ranchwood in the flow direction?
Some more Ranchwood. So right now Ranchwood, Ranchwood, the last house that goes into, into, flows down Ranchwood is going to be all Jacobson's. Everything else flows to the north and to the eastern west.
To the north?
Yes. Your sewer, your sewer goes to the...
My sewer is not going to the north? My sewer flows to the south. We put that eye down my drain?
You, you, you come out to the new, you're hooked up to the new line and just put in. Hook up the line and then it goes towards Jennings.
To the east?
Towards...
And then north, yes.
And then goes north?
Yes. Yeah, doesn't come out of my house.
You're correct.
So then we are on the end of the storm sewer, or the sanitary sewer?
You're on the high side of that line, yep?
Yep, so what's her name's, Megan? That'll all go to the west?
Megan.
Megan?
Megan.
Jeremy, Megan?
Megan goes to the west on original line, I want to apologize for the last two.
And that, and that will, because eventually you'll be, that's what you'll write? You'll be doing the rest of Ranchwood?
That's a, that's a, that's a flat line and that may happen. We talked about putting Ranchwood on CIP projects, there was a fight, you know, resistance on that. So we decided, well, that works all together and we're bypassing that. There's a PVC line, it's just as many as the current re-education budget.
The re-assess is, is when they put the extration, or whatever you call it, for the sanitaries, there was, there is a pipe that comes out of that that goes to the west.
Yes, that's a service port that we could actually put a jatter down there and come back and spray. Yep.
Oh, is that what that is?
That's service port.
Okay. So you have to dig down in the street to get that?
No, it was already there, that's where the old original manhole went. The only, it's connected, the new one's lower and the old one's up here, so we just...
Off of there, there was a pipe down to grade or whatever the other ones was that went to the west, to the west, a PVC pipe.
Okay, let's talk about elevation here real quick. And so if you want to help here, the original, the original sewer line was about four and a half feet deep from the top of the surface that went west.
Okay.
Okay, the new line that we put in was six and a half feet deep.
Yep.
And it goes east.
Yep.
And then north, we just talked about.
Yep.
Okay, so we, we got a new line coming in and we, and all, all the other lines that were going in are impacted outside of there. Now nobody else was in except our service port. Okay, so we're at this here.
No, but it didn't lose anywhere, but to the, to the west out of that manhole there is a sewer pipe that goes west.
Two feet higher than the bottom of the ditch.
That could be, yeah.
Yep, right. Can you explain it any better to me?
Other than, I have a picture, it's just a high point, this, this line that's on...
Where did they go? Yeah, that's just...
It's just the original water that went that way.
Well, that, that's your original line, that's...
Original line, yeah, yeah. We just took it in the same manhole, in the manhole.
There's one up here that's higher.
So it's just there, it's not...
And they put it, and then we just connected that one to, to help.
So that's just disconnected there?
But there isn't...
No, we're hooked up, so we can shoot right down to, I'll explain. But again, this side, because the sewer is two foot lower and everything you have to back up when you had a line two, two foot, you have to back up the whole way it was.
So they're wanting to maintain this, we got to run it clean down.
It's a, it's a, it's a maintenance zone.
I, okay.
Yeah, so they can clean them, they're still following them.
Now, now I follow.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it.
Are we good?
Hey.
Good questions.
Everybody says, everybody says move down questions.
There are 35 minutes yet, so...
I don't know, I don't know how to take that.
Good question, Mike. No, I mean...
It's learning for all of us, because I, yeah.
Yeah, we... What, what was the purpose? What was the purpose? What was the purpose on the flat spot in the curb?
In the curb.
Um, okay, if we mean.
Drive over curb?
Is that what that is? And what was, what's?
Um, what, what, um, what I noticed.
Between us, me and Bird, yes.
So what I've noticed, the limiting factors of the water draining from there that used to get inundated from the fairgrounds, you know, and stuff. You've seen that, I've seen it. It looks like there's water mains broken rushing across there. Just a regular snow melt and it's just crazy. And one of the limiting factors of that was like curb. And we decided, okay, after we outfacilitate three guys' backyards and they'll be able to, to, to get it across. So we wanted to get out to the road to get it down that, that first catch base. And then again, we talked, when we came in, we lowered the center of the road. So again, it can flow over because there's, there's, there's only a six inch line service in those, those two manholes. It's way under thousands of people, a place that you know offered to go. You know, so we're just trying to maximize about ground drainage. Need a place to chill on more of the bulk carts here?
No, I don't need that.
The curb didn't, the curb didn't cost any more money.
No, that curb, I mean, water didn't sit in my backyard but very little between Dennis and me. It all sat back on Dennis's property. So I don't think that the curb held any water back. Now, now when it rains and it builds up, water runs back into my grass because it's down.
Oh, sure, because it, it, that's not holding it to there. Yep, but.
And it runs across the road and then goes down to Storm Sewer.
So I, I just, the, the best way for me to say this is I'm looking at the bigger picture. We actually took shots of what the height of the fairgrounds property is, what Danny's height is, what your height is and where it's going to go. When water gets so high, it's going something.
Yeah.
Probably just updates where it seems to be. The bigger pictures.
Did some intakes get put back in the front on there to go?
Of that original damage line, yeah.
That has to help.
It has.
That has to.
Do that stuff to not, you know? We don't just pick them.
But, I mean, it's just.
Mm-hmm.
Whatever. I mean, as far as I was concerned, the curb wasn't stopping the water. The curb would stop the water from backing up when the street filled up. And now it backs up to about where the, your shut off was. Not a big deal, just.
Anything else? Any other questions?
So Bill's gonna check on the shut off. Get all the Tracy, get back to you. All right.
Good. All right, are we okay to close the hearing or?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be just closing, but we just can't.
Close this one.
Yeah.
Can't start the next meeting, so.
Well, thanks.
I think we're gonna have to. Especially me. We're gonna keep that one.
Oh.
Discussion on this. We need to do anything. We're just gonna. We will officially close the public hearing.